Okay, welcome, everyone. This is the City of East Hampton City Council Property Committee. We are meeting today is January 14th, 2021. It is 6:30 PM Eastern Time. Per order of Governor Baker, we are meeting remotely in recorded session. Due to the COVID pandemic, we are not having in-person meetings. I see present are our other committee members, Councillor Kuzinski and Councillor Flood. And we do have to approve, we do still have minutes to approve, but I don't have them in front of me, so we have to wait till the next meeting. Quick new bit, quick business before we get started with discussing the Housing Production Plan. We currently do not have a clerk, and I would also be open to taking motions if the other councillors desire any reorganization regards to Chair of the Committee.
I would nominate Councillor Flood for clerkship if she so desired.
Councillor Flood, you're already clerking another committee. Are you, how are you, what are your thoughts?
I'm clerking another committee, but I would be, I would be amenable to the position. I have no problem with that.
If for any reason you were unable to, I'd be happy to fill in and do it. Or if you felt strongly, I'm not opposed to it.
I assume I'm doing a good job in my other committee since Councillor Kuzinski is on it. So I think if my notes are acceptable there, then they should be acceptable here.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so then I'm happy to second that motion. Then I will take a roll call vote. Councillor Kuzinski?
Hi, Kuzinski, aye.
I am also an aye. Councillor Flood?
Aye.
Okay, we have a new clerk, three, nothing for Councillor Flood. Is there, are there any motions for a new chair?
I have no motion.
Seeing none?
Motion.
Are there any members of the public here to speak? Okay, seeing none. We will move forward with our, our primary item of business, which is the Housing Production Plan. Do either of the, one moment, please. Do you get the leash? Sorry, I have a puppy here. Either Planner Bag or Mrs. Tatro, do either of you require to be made co-hosts?
I don't.
Planner Bag may have some screens to share, or anyone plan on sharing anything? That could be most helpful if you're a co-host.
Yeah, I hadn't planned on it, but it's pretty easy. We could pull up the plan if that, if that seemed necessary. So we could cross, maybe cross that bridge in a few minutes.
Okay. All right, then the planner had requested, I know, Jana, I believe you have tomorrow to be at seven, is that correct?
Seven or 7:30. So I, you know, they know I'm gonna be late, so it's okay.
Well, regardless, you're the star of the show tonight. So, well, you and Jeff, you could be co-stars. We are both, we are all a ready and willing audience. So if it's okay, I will, I've reviewed the plan and I will turn it over to you.
Sure. I don't, Jeff, do you want to give any introduction?
I was just trying to figure out and go back and figure out which city council packet, you know, the materials were in. It was, the draft Housing Production Plan was transmitted to City Council, and I was just trying to figure out the date of that.
I received an email, I can email it to you right now, Jeff, if that's, if you'd like.
No, I was just more for the public record, just to say that it was transmitted, I want to say it was in the December 16th packet. It's a one-page.
I think that's the case.
Yep. It was a one-page transmittal with a link to the whole document. And I think just by way of big introduction is, the City Council and Planning Board are the entities that are charged with adopting the plan. And through a series of discussions with the City Council President and scheduling, it looks like that meeting is gonna be February 17th. So that'll be, you know, that's the goal would be for that meeting to have our housing consultant, the Barrett Group, her name is Judy Barrett, would attend and give a, you know, a relatively brief overview of what the plan and what the plan does. And the idea would be we'd have the Planning Board members present at that meeting, and the goal would be at the, at the, at the conclusion, you know, barring some unforeseen circumstance that both, both bodies would vote to adopt the plan. And then at that point, that, that's kind of the last step for Judy Barrett to submit it to DHCD on behalf of the City of East Hampton. So that's kind of like the really big picture. I just wanted to capture that.
This is, we were actually shooting for January 20 before, and now we've moved to the 16th of February.
Yes, the, the second meeting in February of City Council is the 16th. I would say, I think it's the 17th, February 17th was the target.
Okay.
So maybe with that, Jana, do you want to give an overview sort of, well, history, just, you know, we have one of these, this is an update and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, sure, thanks, Jeff. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Jana Tatro, I'm the Chair of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnerships. Nice to see everyone. So, yeah, just to give a little bit of background, this is actually our third Housing Production Plan. We had one, I think, maybe 2010, and then one in 2014, and so this is, this is the update. They do expire about every five years, so we do try to update them every five years. The Housing Production Plan is actually a state sanctioned document, so it is approved, as Jeff mentioned, by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And there are specific things that have to be included in the Housing Production Plan in order for it to be approved by the state. So that is typically why we previously Pioneer Valley Planning Commission did our, did our report, our plan, and then Judy Barrett has done this one. So we typically use a consultant that's familiar with how to, you know, put together a Housing Production Plan. It includes things like a community needs assessment. So if you've seen, looked at the plan, you'll notice there's a lot of data about East Hampton, and then lays out some goals and strategies for how to produce more affordable housing in the city. It has several, you know, there's several reasons why we want to have a Housing Production Plan. One, it shows a commitment from the City of East Hampton on affordable housing. It shows the state that we care about affordable housing, and that we have specific action steps and priorities to produce more affordable housing and to preserve the housing that we have. It also helps us be eligible for other grants and funding opportunities. So when East Hampton was a housing, received the Housing Choice designation a couple of years ago, one of the reasons that we were eligible for that designation was because we had an approved Housing Production Plan, and that helped us be eligible for some funding opportunities. And the other reason, which I think is less of a priority for the housing partnership, but I think in general, the Housing Production Plans lay out a certain number of units as a goal for the city to produce every year, and it's based on our year-round housing stock. So it's not a number that we get to decide, it's a number that the state, like the formula decides for us, and it's been 38 affordable units a year. If we meet that goal, then technically, if the city was approached by a developer that wanted to use Chapter 40B to produce affordable housing, and the city felt like that was not a great project for us, that if we have met that goal in that one-year period, then we can actually deny that project, which otherwise is fairly challenging to do. We did meet that goal one year when both Parsons Village and 15 Cottage came online, but we didn't have a certified plan because it was right in the time when the plan wasn't approved yet, but was written. So, but it, you know, it, we got units, so that was the most important part. So it, you know, that's sort of the third reason.
Can I interrupt really quick?
Yeah.
Just for the sake of the public, can you, can you quickly explain the, what 40B is and the advantages or disadvantages of, of allowing those, those developments?
So Chapter 40B is a state statute. It was, I think, drafted in 1969. It's sometimes referred to as the anti-snob zoning law. And so it is designed to help communities that may have zoning that does not normally permit multifamily housing or denser housing, to override that zoning to produce multifamily or denser units. And so if a developer is using Chapter 40B, they get some relief on zoning bylaws and sort of setbacks, the number of units, sometimes height of building. And it, as a result, in exchange, the developer gets, we get 25% of those units are designated as affordable. For homeownership units, which actually East Hampton does have a 40B homeownership project, it's the Treehouse, not the Button Road, I can't think of what the ownership units are called, project. 25% of those count on our state subsidized housing inventory, so along with 40B.
Of the single-family homes that are there.
Yes, of the single-family homes, there's 25% of them are affordable. And as part of Chapter 40B also sets a goal for each city and town in Massachusetts to have 10% of their year-round housing stock deed restricted as affordable. So sort of what we call capital A affordable, long-term affordable, not, you know, happens to be less expensive because of the market. So for homeownership units, 25% of them count as affordable and are designated as affordable. If you have a rental property built under Chapter 40B, even if only 25% of them are affordable, actually all of them would count on your subsidized housing inventory, which is an incentive for communities to permit rental housing. So, you know, there are lots of communities in Massachusetts that have really, you know, two-acre zoning, you know, single-family homes, that's all they build, that's all their zoning is designed for. You know, East Hampton is not one of those communities, but there are many of them. And so Chapter 40B can be a tool to help those communities build multifamily housing. It can be controversial, you know, not everyone likes it, it can be, you know, challenging for neighborhoods, but it is one tool, you know, I like to think of it as one tool in our toolbox to build affordable housing. And, and East Hampton has permitted several 40B projects throughout the city that have, you know, I would argue, turned into lovely projects. But it is, yeah, it is a part of the Housing Production Plan and sort of why we're, we're doing the Housing Production Plan, because the state wants us to make progress toward that 10% goal. And even if we never get there, and some towns don't, as long as we're making progress and we're making it a priority to continuously work on it, that's what the state wants us to see.
If I may interrupt just the one quick, with one quick question.
And I just.
I always thought that there was a 10% goal, and I wasn't aware that if a community met the projected plan goal, if you have a plan and that plan lists, for example, you said 38, then if you meet that, then you could essentially say to the developer, not, not this year, if the plan wasn't a plan that seemed to make sense for the community. Otherwise, it's wide open. The Zoning Board of Appeals, here's the case, but has very little flexibility to say no for the, given the current zoning. It has to be no for a variety of other reasons. Is that, is that pretty much an accurate assessment? So is it new with the, with the new number, or is that always there?
Jana, one second.
Year number.
I'll allow the question, but just, I'll ask committee members in those present, just please raise your hand to be recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think it's new. It definitely existed in our previous plan, but I can't, I don't know if it went all the way back to 1969. We'd have to look.
Thank you.
But yes, otherwise, your assessment is correct. And in order to deny a 40B permit, you have to have a really, like, health and safety concern or a major conservation issue. Otherwise, right, the, you're trying to get the best, what every, would make everybody happy, what the best product would be for the community with the developer. Any other questions?
No, no, thank you. Please continue.
So, what else? So that's sort of the background of what a Housing Production Plan is. Again, the one we had from 2014, we had 23 action items as, that came out of that plan. The sort of, I guess, the, the fourth purpose, the sort of benefit of having a plan is it gives purpose to our housing partnership, because it actually gives us a to-do list. And it gives actually, not just us, the Planning Department, the City Council, CPA Committee, it gives, you know, the city kind of a list of action items. And so from the 2014 plan, there were 23 priorities. The Housing Partnership, together with other city departments, worked on about eight of those. So, you know, we do, you know, use that list as our guide for what we're gonna work on during the year. And as I mentioned, it's expiring. And so this time around, the Housing Production Plan is part of a bigger project that the city and the Planning Department is working on, which is sort of this housing market study that Judy Barrett has been hired to do. So it's not just, the Housing Production Plan is just one piece of it, and then there's gonna be other pieces, you know, the accessory dwelling bylaw and some zoning suggestions and some other things. And so I think, I mean, I, the plan is really long. Hopefully you've all had a chance to look at it. I know Councillor Peak was at the, our last meeting where we had a presentation. I think the things that I, I really like about this plan, that's a little bit different from the 2014 plan, and I think you'll see it a little bit more when Judy does her presentation to the council, is that it, it puts it in, nice job putting it in context. So it gives us the data of, you know, all of the things that, you know, things about population and age of housing and trends, but then also gives us some really good context of why some of that's important and sort of ties it together, which I think makes it a really helpful plan and a really kind of very educational about sort of the landscape in East Hampton. It again is gonna set aside, it does have some action items at the end, which we asked for, so that will again give us some good, you know, action steps to take going forward. Yeah, I mean, I, that's sort of what I wanted to say. I'm happy to answer questions or have a conversation about it.
Thank you, Ms. Tatro. Let me just see, Planner Bag, do you have anything to add so far?
I would add a couple things. I think Jana did a great job. I mean, I think this is a really important document. It's part of the bigger, it's part of, I would say that the Housing Production Plan is the biggest part of what the Barrett Group is doing. The other was to, because the consultant was gonna be collecting all the data on housing, that was really where we felt there was an opportunity that there should be sort of this outline for housing in general. So the Housing Production Plan is very, it's very specific to affordable housing, and we felt there was this opportunity to also get, sort of the way we're describing it, is an outline for us to follow for, for all housing. So market rate housing and other housing needs as well, as part of, like, what we had envisioned as part of a master plan chapter, you know, on, on our housing outlook for the next, you know, period of, of multiple years. And then the, there's a very specific request for the consultant to help us look at accessory dwelling units. Where we found a lot of successes with these plans, while we have the consultant on board with us, if they can help us make the first step, like the first action item, so it's been pretty effective so far that we have a plan, we don't want it to sit on a shelf. So the first step, you know, out of this, out of the gate, will be, you know, accessory dwelling units. And possibly, there's a, there's a, there's a long list of things that we will need to do over time, but to try to make the most compelling kind of first step, first or second step, you know, that's really important for us to do. We're all feeling the housing pressure and the questions about housing affordability, so this is very timely. The other group that was really involved at kind of initiating this was the Economic Development Industrial Committee, so the EDIC. I think a while ago made a pretty, pretty good connection to housing and economic development, that, that we want, we need to be able to support people moving here and support people staying here with affordable, you know, even attainable housing costs in order to support economic development. So that was a big part. I realize there might be questions. There's a couple other components of this. So I think as Jana said, that there's, there's action items, some of which are carried forward from the 2014 plan. And then a few of them are kind of specific to respond to what DHCD is, is asking. So there's a, there's a section, Strategies to Address DHCD Requirements, that we asked Judy to really kind of really help us here with, with known things that we want to look at and give us some strategies and some things to, to consider. And I know I'm being long-winded. The, the last part, which is sort of above and beyond, is in the 2014 plan, there were, there, there was a list of properties that might be suitable for housing development. And, you know, this plan, DHCD asks this question is, where, you know, what properties would the municipality support or encourage a 40B? And so we really took that, we looked at that carefully because I think it's really important. And so it's a lot of the same properties that were listed in the 2014 plan, they get carried forward. And then we're also, we also asked the Barrett Group to show, sort of to visualize what some of these properties might look like with housing. And so, you know, that's not, that's not norm, that's not part of a base Housing Production Plan. That was something that we added, and we asked for extra sort of illustrations and evaluations to, to help us visualize what it would look like. So those are important features of this plan. So, you know, I'll pause and see if there's questions or any, any other place to have a conversation about it.
So I'll just, I'll make a few comments, and then I'll just open it up to other councillors and people here. First of all, I think the plan is incredibly, the, the report was incredibly thorough and very enlightening. Something that really just stuck out to me, a couple things were, demographic-wise, the decrease in essentially a number, residents under 25 and even older, that, that we're seeing a decrease in essentially school-age children and decrease in K through 12 families, which was certainly concerning to me. And I'm, I don't, you know, obviously we just get the raw data, we don't get necessarily reasons for that, but I'm, I'm sure affordability plays into that. And, and one thing that potentially went hand in hand with that is that corrected for inflation, our, our mean or median income hasn't really increased at all in a number of decades. Or other issues, other things I found interesting too, were, you know, predominantly we've transitioned to single-family homes in the city, and there's a, a large discussion and some very poignant statements about accessory dwellings and how those are managed here, both on the front end and kind of on the back end via transfer of property, which, you know, I think certainly there's, there needs to be a more thorough discussion about that, as well as some kind of thoughtful discussion about zoning around multifamily units and how we can manage that. Actually, just as a side, as we speak, I think North Hampton's having a discussion right now, tonight, about allowing multifamily units by right across the city. Other things, I did really appreciate the identification of some of the properties, the one down near True Heart Drive, as well as the one over, between church and, I forget, the other street. So that was kind of enlightening, just to see where there are some privately owned parcels. And then the discussion, of course, of reuse of our school buildings, especially as it pertains to creating affordable housing that's within areas of the city that's excessive, that'd be accessible to residents in terms of amenities, et cetera. And then, so I don't, I don't have really a lot of questions, because I think there's a lot of great answers here. The one, I think the only one question I'd have, and then I would, I don't know much, I would say if, if, if everyone could, if that could be banked, and then I'll, I'll let other, other people ask, ask questions. But, and this is somewhat for the planner, but there's a, the parcel right behind, off of Park Street, right behind Treehouse, seems like an area that's potentially ripe for development of affordable housing. And as far as the community is concerned, we already have kind of a budding community there at Treehouse, and I was kind of curious if that was, well, I guess I'll ask the question now, and then we can move on, but was that a purposeful omission, or was that just an oversight? Because I think that, and let me find the term, one of the things I really liked about the, the kind of model proposal at the Main Street location was a open space residential development. And I think that in terms of what we're talking about with honoring conservation in the city, but also kind of maintaining and maintaining green space, I think, for instance, that that parcel behind, there next to Treehouse would be ideal. So I'm just, I'm just curious if there's been any thought about, about that to either the planner or to Ms. Tatro?
And I don't know if you want to bank it and see what the other questions are. I know, Jana, we, Jana, how long do you have, do you have, do you have only until seven? Or?
I can, I told them I would probably be late, so, I mean, this is the advantage of Zoom, is that I just hang up with you.
But let me take, let's take other questions then and comments, and then we can turn it back over to you. Are there any, oh, Councillor Peak?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you mentioned what's going on in North Hampton, and I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that a similar recommendation is part of this plan, for us to allow duplexes citywide by right. So that's, that's a thing that I think, I think in general, you know, if we go forward and adopt this plan, I, I think that, that some of these recommendations are things that I'd recommend the council move somewhat aggressively on.
Do you have any questions, sir? Or just comments?
No, I was just being that awful person who's like, it's more of a comment than a question.
No, I, no, and I think it's, I did remember reading that. I appreciate you pointing that out for us in the public, absolutely, though, because, yeah, so either the other committee members with any questions or comments?
I know from my perspective, I think it looks like the subjects are being covered very well, well explained. I, just to dive quickly into the weeds, not to repeat what you've already covered, Councillor Zarrett, but the loss of, of, of number of units, I was curious where, I believe it was 41 or 47 units have disappeared from the subsidized housing inventory. While we added units, there were, it wasn't clear to me why they had quite come off the rolls. Maybe you could just quickly explain some of that, if I made my question clear? Either Jeff or...
Rehab units, Jeff? I'd have to look.
To be honest, it's, it's not, I don't have a solid answer to it at this point, but that's something that we can take, if Jana doesn't have any additional information, we can take that to Judy and get a little more clarification. I mean, I think some of them have a long period of affordability attached to them, and then that goes away. And so, you know, that was, that was a struggle that I experienced while, while I was in Amherst, was that they had several that got built in like the mid-sixties.
Right.
It just corresponded with them all dropping off around similar time, but I don't know, I don't know the exact answer to that question.
The reason I mention it is, I, I didn't think we had that case here in East Hampton, but I know North Hampton had severe issues where, you know, 240 units, all of a sudden, were gonna become offline and now go to market rate. If we had, it didn't, didn't look to me like we had similar issues, and that would just present an area of concern. I did notice here that 15 Cottage Street dropped out at 2012, 21, when, too? Is that, or will drop out? Is that a, it must be for 100 years affordable? Okay. It wasn't in perpetuity. It's to last for 100 years. That was just on page 33 of the report. If, if it's not too much of an aside, is there, is our, our figures different for, as Councillor Zarrett had said, the median household income and household and individual income seems rather stagnant, stagnant over a 30-year period? I thought that was on page 22 of the report. And I didn't know if that is a situation that is common in all communities around us, or is that something specific to East Hampton?
Councillor Peak?
Speaking as an economist, that is a very common situation, not just in Pioneer Valley, but nationwide. Really haven't seen, I mean, some communities become more or less affluent, but as a whole, we really haven't seen a lot of income growth since.
I'm talking just the same income 30 years later, and that just came as a bit of a surprise to me, anyway. Thank you.
I mean, all of that stuff's like inflation-adjusted, so it's like, maybe they make more money, but the buying power is basically the same.
If it's inflated, inflation-adjusted, that would be quite understandable. Those were specific questions. I really... Those were specific questions. I'm really impressed with the quality of the report. And I look forward to continuing. Those are my questions. Please, Counsel, Counsel Flood?
I just want to echo the quality of this report. I mean, I thought it was.
Point of order.
Oh, sorry.
Counsel Flood? Yes, the chair recognizes you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just again, I just want to point out the quality of this report. And I found that the illustrations on the properties that were at the end to be incredibly helpful as somebody who I know the area, but to have the overview and to have the potential outlay of those communities as developed was incredibly helpful to really picture that. And I I do want to echo, it is alarming that, you know, the lack of economic growth to the, to in our community in terms of the low income and very low income, it was very alarming and disturbing and, you know, really really propped up my anecdotal thoughts and feelings about what's happening in this community. So I hope that, you know, more people can really embrace this data and use it to propel us forward. I was also just alarmed at, it did point out, and I'm, I have so many things highlighted, I don't remember exactly which page, but we do have a large population of single parent homes here. And that's something else that really jumped out. So relating to current issues with access to internet for school children, dealing with this remote situation, it just, it really reinforced for me the kind of supports that are are needed in our community. But again, I just, I want to thank you for this, it's incredible data. And I hope, I I hope many more people really take the time to read through this and try to digest what it's laid out here. So, you know, thank you to not only the Barrett Group, but to your team for bringing this forward to all of us.
Ms. Tatro, I saw you had your hand up before.
Well, I just, I was going to say that the 41 units that came off the inventory, we should, we can check and have Judy address it at the meeting, but my, I'm pretty sure that they are housing rehab units. So several years ago, there were housing rehabilitation programs that had deed restrictions on them that were either 15 years or 30 years, and you used to be able to count them on the subsidized housing inventory. That has changed and I don't think we can anymore. And so you often see those will start coming off because they expired. And so I, my inclination is that's what those are, but we can, we'll double check.
Thank you.
Counsel Flood?
Yeah, just a question to clarify, is housing rehab units, would that be like community development block grants or, okay?
Yeah, through, could be community development block grant or some other, there used to be other sources, I think. And we used to be able to count them and I think they grandfathered them in, but now as they start expiring, you see them coming off. So it wasn't like a 41 unit project that came off, it was probably like one, one unit, units, but we can double check.
Counsel Flood?
I guess I would just say, I mean, it's, I don't know, it's not quite a question. It's a thought is, when I was looking at that list and I was looking at the units that are, you know, the timeline for when other units would fall off. My thought is, you know, what is the mechanism? And I don't know, I I guess looking in here, there was discussion about tax incentives. But, you know, what is the thought and the strategy around when we do have units that are coming up? And we do have a certain amount of time before we lose another chunk to that process. But are we ready to address, you know, incentivizing keeping those units that are about to expire from falling off? That was one big question I had in reading this. I mean, other than the tax incentive, are there any other strategies we can pursue to keep those in our inventory? That's for whoever might.
Well, if I could, I mean, I think that one, you know, that is something where what I, what I, what I would try to do in between now and February 17th is consult with, to talk to our consultant and see if that becomes an action item. I think it's, it's something that does, that warrants being on that list. You know, it's not something that the, this plan will, it won't create the strategy. But if it identifies that as something we need to be looking at, I think that that could be really important to have. Make sure that it's listed somewhere. So I think that that's, that's kind of straightforward. I think it makes a lot of sense that we should, if it's not in the action list, you know, it's something that should be there and it's, it's important because that that will happen. So I think the, I appreciate this preliminary input. I mean, I I would like to try to respond to Counselor Zarek's question and then, you know, my, my global question is, you know, based on what you've seen, you know, would you be comfortable, you know, reporting out to the full city council that you would, you'll recommend, you know, that the whole council vote to adopt that they won't, they'll get the presentation from the consultant, they'll have glance, they'll have reviewed it and they will likely have some questions, but barring something really unforeseen, we're just trying to make sure we have a clear path. But so, Owen, in terms of your question about that specific property adjacent to Treehouse, the, some of the rationale here was the majority of the properties listed are in our smart growth district. So we have, it surrounds the downtown and loops over into the Mill District. And it was created in 2009. And it was an area that, at that time, was collectively identified as suitable areas for more dense development. And so using that as the baseline, we, we use that. And then we checked the properties that were in the 2014 plan and almost all of them were there. And so it's not to suggest that it's a safe bet, but it was the second time that we've identified those areas as being kind of suitable for denser development. So we're, we're very comfortable kind of listing those properties. So it's the two school properties and then all the downtown parcels. And so the, there are two, there are two outliers. The, there's the property, the former Casey Top property. And then there's a property on South Main Street, which is, some people call it the Fedor property, closer to South Main, but, and so those were chosen because they are actively being listed for sale. And so they are, you know, for, for some intents and purposes, they are available for development. And I do want to say that Irving and Church Street properties are, they are in a sub district of the 40R. So they were, that was, they're, they're lumped into that 40R, they've already previously been identified. So the Treehouse property, the city owned one, kind of falls a little bit as an outlier. And it was something where we didn't really have the second layer of review to suggest and put it in this plan specifically. So that was kind of some of the, that's, you know, that's a little bit of the rationale why it's not specifically listed. I think when you do look at that, look at that property, though, it does make sense. But it would beg the other question to look at other city owned properties as well. It's just a little bit more, it's a little bit farther from goods and services in main thoroughfares, although it is, you know, it would be adjacent to the new school. So there are some pros and cons. So, you know, my question, I guess, would be if, if, if people felt that, if the subcommittee felt like it was worth trying to put it on the list, I think it's not out of the question. It just would not be as straightforward as the other properties that were listed for those reasons. So that's kind of, that's how I would respond to that in terms of that one property.
So, yeah, I mean, my thought, I mean, having kind of become familiar with the available city owned parcels and in terms of ones that actually could have vehicle access and, you know, be developable, that's, that's obviously the one that jumps out and have to go back and look. You know, I don't know if it's the type of thing, plan or bag, where we can just include just a blanket action item for, for a review of available parcel, city owned parcels in our recommendation, is that, is that too broad or?
No, I think that that would be, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not one to usually just take the safe bet. But yeah, that would be a clearer path to an action item that would assess other city owned properties because it would be just a broader look at those properties. The last thing that I failed to just, I think, articulate was that the, the DHCD requirement is, you know, parcels that the municipality would encourage a 40B. And I think that that's where we would draw a line where I don't think we have enough information available to us that we would actively encourage a 40B there. Because I think it would, we would do that first step first, which is do these baseline evaluations of the city owned properties for housing purposes. You know, it didn't pass the dog park test. And so I think we, we do know that it would be pretty sensitive. Whereas the other properties, the 40R, you know, is really clear that, you know, those would be suitable areas for 40B. And and we have the 15 Cottage Street as one example that works really well in our downtown. And then the two other properties are just, they're on the market. So they're, they're much more, you know, it's a lot easier to say those owners are actively seeking something to happen and therefore we would actually encourage a 40B there. So that's kind of the rationale behind how I would respond to why that's not on the list.
Okay. And I know, Ms. Tatro, we're, it's now 7/11 and I don't, I know that you have precious time. I really appreciate your being here. I guess first I'll just say, are there any other questions for Jenna? Okay, so seeing none, do you have any, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Peak?
This is sort of just related to the, I, I guess this might be more for, for Jeff. But Jen, I think you, you might have some, some insight into this. I really liked the report and Jeff, you and I have spoken briefly about this before, but I really liked the report. But just from a counselor perspective, one thing that I was wondering is if, if not in this report, then in some future work, we, we might be able to get some of those zoning recommendations sort of fleshed out into more like model zoning, either by with the help of the planning department or some consultants or whatnot, because some of that stuff is, our zoning is quite complex and no one on the council has a professional background that's actually well attuned. So there's a lot of the stuff that I would love to just write and introduce as like, okay, yeah, our housing production plan says we should do this. I think that this, you know, our constituents have made it quite clear that they want us to do more of this stuff. Let's move forward with it. But I'm not actually sure how I would even write a lot, a lot of those recommendations. I'm not sure what the language would be that would actually do that. I don't know if there's nonprofit resources out there that could help support that sort of effort or anything in the state or whether this is something that we could allocate some more funds to help the consultant with. But I did, when I first got onto the council and read the original housing production plan, which is on that, or the, or the most recent one, the 2014 one, I was a little disheartened by how many things were there for the council to do that had no one, they had no action had ever been taken from the council on it. I don't want to see that again. I want to see us, if we're voting to say that, yes, this is how we're going to do this. I want to see us in quick order moving on a number of these items. And so I'm wondering if there's, from the perspective of the Housing Partnership, the Planning Department, like, where do we go to actually, you know, in a comprehensive way, move forward on this?
Then I'll open that to either, either Jenna or Jeff.
Jenna, why don't you go first and I'll follow up?
Well, and I think Counselor Peak, you had mentioned this last time at our last meeting, that, you know, we should come and ask the council to do things. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. I mean, I think normally we, the Housing Partnership would look at the action items and then think about what's doable and what's possible in consultation with the planning department. So I think that, my guess is we would take a similar approach. I think that Jeff will probably say that we would need, the City Night needs help rewriting some of these. You know, the zoning, I've heard Jeff say this many times, like, you know, zoning bylaw is this huge thing. You know, I think one of the, one of the things that, that I am most interested in, this kind of goes back, I think, to what Counselor Flood had pointed out, is that, you know, 19.5% of our households in East Hampton live in poverty and 66% of those households are single parent households. And so 33% of our kids in the East Hampton Public School System live in poverty. And one of, one of our, one of the zoning issues is our parking regulations. So if you look at our parking regulations, when you build multifamily housing, how many parking spaces you need? You know, it's one space per bedroom plus 10 extra visitor spaces or something. And so that really discourages multifamily housing because you don't have enough parking. And so if we, you know, want to look at the data and sort of who's being left out of our zoning, I do think that we can make some pretty clear connections to some things that we might not be terrible to, not, you know, to change. It might be on the easier side. And I would just think, you know, I think we would look to the planning department to help us sort through what, you know, seems like a priority. That would be my priority.
I think that makes sense. I would, I would echo that. I think it's hard to get a document that lays out some number, let's say there's 12, you know, 12 zoning changes is, if you package them all together, my, my concern would be that they would get so cumbersome and 12 kind of separate discussions all happening at once could be, it's, it's going to be really challenging for people to understand the, the potential sort of outcomes. But I think understanding the, the readiness of city council, I think, is really important. I think that was a lot of what drove this plan this far. My, my opinion at the moment is that there are a few things I think we could do quickly that will have a positive impact on creating more housing. And so, you know, Tom and I did have this back and forth. I mean, I think that for quite a while, that this idea of the accessory dwelling units and making them so there's no land use permitting attached to that. You know, we, we established some criteria and if they're met, then they can get building permits. And I think it, it, it's, it's coming out and it's showing, the data is showing in this plan that that's a need. And then anecdotally, there are people in East Hampton who are looking, who would be interested in doing that. So, you know, it's that phenomenon of elder parents who have the ability to retire with some X amount of dollars. And that X amount of dollars is enough, like, that's, that's the right amount to build a unit on an existing property rather than buying a lot and then building a house, then you're, then you're priced out. So there's a really, there's a real timeliness to trying to do that. And then the other one that I really think the time is, is now is if we really want to encourage multifamily housing, especially with affordable units, that we would make it by right. So right now, it is, it requires a special permit and there's great risk that a developer takes on to do all the due diligence and planning work and and not know that he can act, that he or she can actually get the special permit. So that's one of the biggest incentives we can provide is to allow multifamily with affordable by right. And given that we have larger properties for sale and we know that there is a growing market, like I think coming out of COVID, I think we, we see some, we see the potential for housing development to happen. So if we took those two first steps and could get them accomplished in the relatively short timeline, I think we would actually see housing get built. And then I think, and then I think it's picking the rest of the, rest of the actions to fall in after that. My fear would be if we did everything at once, we might not get anything. And and that would, that would not serve us well. So the last real token, the token piece of information is that although I don't follow what North Hampton does, because I just don't have enough time, I do know that they've been talking about this concept for years, several years. And I did look at the, the information that was attached to their zoning amendment and they have really robust design guidelines in order to get the two families by right in every district. So, you know, I do know that they've gone through sort of different iterations of planning studies to get to, you know, when you see it in the Gazette, like East, North Hampton's doing that. It's really important to know that they have structured, you know, a bunch of planning initiatives to get to that point. And I think it's okay. I think we're, we're a little bit behind that. So we're at the planning stage and then if we make some incremental steps, you know, we'll do what's right for East Hampton and we can probably get some accessory dwelling units. And if we get multifamily developments that include affordable housing, that would be win, that would be a win. And I, I just see that we kind of have this timing right now that if we can accomplish those two amendments in short order, I, I think we would see housing get built.
So, I mean, again, would, oh, I'm sorry. So, I mean, again, would, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Peak.
Would the, I mean, I don't, we don't need to get into the weeds too much here, but could, would the multifamily thing even work if we have these restrictive parking issues?
Right. There's, I think that that, I think that would get rolled in to looking at that amendment is adjusting the parking. And I think there's another one that came up recently. There was a project, um, you know, the planning board spent, you know, seven hearings and that's, that's like 14 hours, stopped talking about some units on, 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 on one of our roads. And, um, there's, there's one other section that I think we need to tweak, which is, you know, how do you determine if this type of development is compatible with either that neighborhood or the city overall? And then, so there's a couple of sections in the multifamily that probably need to be brought forward while that other discussion's happening. So I think parking and a couple of those other features would, would come as part of that multifamily, um, discussion. And I think that's, that's a lot. I think that would take, um, all the, the zoning process, you know, is, is long by itself. And I think adding housing, I think we're, we're talking about, you know, it would be a fair amount of work to get those two things done.
So, I mean, would it be also reasonable to include those as action items and recommendations within our recommendation that we prioritize, um, of reevaluating amendments for, um, uh, accessory dwellings as well as, um, uh, multifamily houses or duplexes?
I think, I think I would want to understand the, the first and foremost objective of the February 17th meeting is to make sure that the city council votes to adopt the plan. So I, I would be fine with those discussions. I just wouldn't want that, that next level of prioritization to, you know, we have to, we, we really want to get that plan adopted and submitted. That's, that's like really important. And then, um, if that's the only opportunity to prioritize those, then, then maybe it's worth having this kind of similar discussion. In my read of it, they're, they're pretty much top on the list. I mean, that was the, the site assessments kind of deal with that a little bit. The recommendations for DHCD and then those action items. You know, the list is not prioritized. So Counselor Zaret, I appreciate that. It's not, it's not a prioritized list, but, I would be comfortable articulating something similar as to things I think if we dealt with them now, we could see results. Some of the other stuff, like what Jana said, you know, I think gets rolled in and other things will have to fall in line. I think after that, if we do it all at once, we might get bogged down.
Okay. So it's, thank you. So it's seven 22, um, Ms. Tatro, do you have any, I know, do you have anything else for us?
I don't have anything else to present. No.
Okay. Um, any of the other members of the committee have any additional comments? Okay. Seeing none. So Planter Bag, um, what's, so what is the next step that we, we would, we would make a motion to and potentially vote to, um, refer the plan, accept the plan? Uh, what would be the, what exactly would be the language here you're looking for?
I mean, I think the, the whole council is being asked to, uh, adopt the plan. So I think this subcommittee would be recommending that the full city council adopt the plan.
Okay. Um, and again, my, uh, relative, relevant to my question prior about evaluating city owned parcels, would that just be potentially part of the, the report?
Yeah, I think, um, you know,
I think it's in the plan as a action item.
It is. Okay.
Work with the mayor, city council, planning to inventory, assess and evaluate city owned land suitability for affordable housing.
Okay. I missed that one.
There's a lot of them, but it's in there.
Okay, great. Um, okay. Well, then I would be happy to take a, a motion, uh, to, to recommend, make a recommendation, uh, to adopt, oh, Counselor Flood?
Well, I was going to make that motion.
Oh, okay. You have the floor.
I would, I would move that we make a recommendation to adopt this plan as presented, uh, to the full council.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
For the purpose of moving along, I would second the motion and just have a bit of discussion.
Absolutely. Um, do you want to discuss that now, Counselor Kuzinski or?
I'm happy to make, to second motions since it's on the table.
Great. Uh, so we have a, a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I just some questions about, I guess Counselor Peak raised some expectations about a plan being there and not really getting to the action items that really would say, hey, these are the, these are the issues. I think Counselor Peak raised some good points. And my, my sense was that, uh, Counselor, Counselor Bag, Planner Bag had indicated that typically, uh, after a plan is put forward, uh, that the community then gets to really look at a couple of issues and then work out those zoning issues, whatever they may be. Accessory apartments, uh, et cetera, uh, duplexes required throughout each district of the city. Those are some sweeping changes that I think require public input certainly. And certainly would get discussion at the council level when it's brought for zoning. So I wouldn't want to raise any expectations that endorsing a plan that may not have been shared by each, read thoroughly by every member of the community. I, I wouldn't want there to be the expectations that this is a very different plan and we're, we're going for every one of these issues. Uh, and they will be presented within the next year or the next two years and we will vote on them. I guess if we're to do that, I would want to know just how widely disseminated the plan has been and how much discussion has occurred among the public in the development of the plan. Jeff, maybe you can help me with some background on that if Counselor Zaret approves the question.
Uh, yes, uh, just for the sake of, uh, that, that's fine. We are in the middle of a motion, but I'll, I'll allow some clarification from, um, the planner.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way I would answer it is that nothing in this plan is automatic. So I think that's really important for everyone to understand. It, uh, you know, I would say 80% of the plan is data. And that was, you know, these discussions have been going on for quite some time, especially the accessory dwelling units. And, and a lot of it was, let's get some data. We really want to make sure we have data to support this and make sure the data shows that, you know, any of these are, are, should be actionable. And so that was really what we've done. And that's, that's the purpose of the plan is to give us the framework to move forward from. It's, we're not getting a, a lot of public engagement on, on, on everything. And, and I think this is a tricky topic to get a lot of engagement on. I think people are concerned with affordability and how can they stay in East Hampton? Um, and we have, those are the hardest things to solve. Um, those you're not going to really solve through zoning. So we have to, like as Jana said, there's, there's a lot of tools in this box that we got to start. We have to start sharpening in them. Um, zoning are just kind of, they're not necessarily the lowest hanging fruit, but there's a couple of things that we could start with to start to open up the opportunity for new development. I would just argue that saying there hasn't been a lot of public input i- is, is fine, but it shouldn't stop the adoption of the plan. And then, then the normal process of bringing forward amendments through what I would consider pretty robust public processes, you know, then, then happens. I think, I think it's, nothing's automatic. So I think what Counselor Peak is talking about is maybe it's him personally taking some initiative to bring forward the accessory dwelling unit amendment and then running it through, you know, a multiple step hearing process. And, and that, that would be the time to get public input on that item. So I wouldn't have any fear that something's going to happen without people knowing. I think we, we have, we've, recently there's been o- observations of how we can do better with outreach. I think we need to do better with all kinds of outreach, um, including zoning, but like anything. So, so maybe moving forward, if we do pick up something multifamily or accessory dwellings, we, we all need to do a better job of publicizing that we're going to talk about it. So I just wouldn't want to tie the two things together too tightly. Uh, I think the plan should be adopted. I think it's a, it's a really good outline for us. And then subsequent steps kind of have to run, run their own course.
I, I would, I would agree that I, I would endorse much of the plan and would like to be able to sink my teeth into certain aspects that we can help to build, uh, to make it pieces of it work. But I didn't want there to be, uh, just out there. An understanding that this is a kind of a fait accompli. There is a huge public process to continue. That this plan and the timing of the plan coming out with COVID-19 and Zoom meetings, et cetera. It just will take some additional work, particularly when it comes down, I think, to determining compatibility. I don't know how many months you spent this summer working on compatibility issues with certain developments. I'm thinking of the Loudville Road development. And, and I think you had mentioned that it had been like six or seven months or eight months, talking about whether the units are compatible with the neighborhood. So to predefine that could be a bit problematic. Anyway, I think you've answered my question. I'm comfortable moving forward with the plan. So I think you've well answered my question.
And, and this is a recommendation to the council. There, there'll be ample time, I, I, I believe, to continue to have this discussion. Um, and I think that, uh, I'll just say quickly with emotion, with, with there being a motion on the table, I, I think Counselor Peak raises a good point and, and it's, you know, we need to continue to maintain the momentum of this. So that will include, you know, ongoing discussion about how to, and how to bring into action these action items. So there is a motion on the table to, uh, recommend adopting the plan, uh, to the full city council. Is there any other, any other comments? Okay, then I will take a vote. Uh, Counselor Flood?
Aye.
Counselor Kuzinski?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Uh, the, uh, motion passes three zero, uh, to recommend to adopt the, um, the housing production plan. Okay. Any closing comments from our guests? No?
Very much.
Okay. Thank you so much, Jana, for all your input and all you do. I appreciate it.
All right. I will, I'm going to zoom off to my other meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Jeff, do you have anything else?
No, I don't think so. Um, I appreciate this. I think this, you know, this, this council process works well. So, um, I think getting a report out, um, on February 17th would be useful. And then, um, I was just thinking in my head, you know, I think the way it seems like it works is, um, President Coniff would turn it to you, Counselor Zaret, to do the brief introduction and then report out, you know, briefly. And then I think we would turn it over to Judy Barrett. And then I think I articulated this in the transmittal is that I think, um, Jana, you know, and that in her committee have really done a lot of work. And I think, I think Jana should be able to say, uh, you know, something about the importance of the plan. And then not to make it laborious, but I think the EDIC, you know, um, you know, I sit with that, um, committee. And for the three years I've been in this position that, you know, it, it's come up every single meeting. And so I think they would probably want the opportunity to also articulate to council the importance of having the plan kind of laid out. And then I think, you know, the planning board will be present and then I think we would be poised for questions and then, and then potentially a vote. So, you know, I, I did talk to President Coniff that we, we pegged like an hour, on the meeting on the 17th to kind of get through all that.
Okay. Yeah, that would be, yeah, that'd be helpful just to go over those, the order of operations with her. Absolutely. Okay. Um, thank you. Um, our only other bit, continuing, we have continuing business with the poll locations. I did have the, uh, Eversource rep basically reached out. And essentially the, the concern, he's going to be at our next full meeting. Uh, the concerns about reserving, um, uh, poll space for, um, uh, for, for municipal purposes, he said, would not be an issue. He, he will be up there at the public hearing to, to answer any questions. But are there any other, uh, any, any other comments by the, the, the committee members about that item? Okay. Uh, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn. Okay. Motion from, uh, Counselor Kuzinski and a second from Counselor Flood. I will take votes. Counselor Flood?
Aye.
Counselor Kuzinski?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Uh, uh, motion passes three zero to adjourn. Um, and, uh, be well, everyone, be safe, wear your masks and, uh, uh, Planner Bag, thank you as always for your contributions.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. It's, it's a great project. So I appreciate you taking the time to talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and, uh, and Jeff, if there's, you know, any fine tuning you want, if you want to talk to me offline about, you know, how I put together my report, happy to do that.
Okay. That sounds good. Luckily we have a little bit of time.
Take care, everyone.
Have a great night, folks.
Bye.